Item number nine, we have our recruitment for solid waste recycling and organic material collection services. We have a report by Steve, City Manager, please.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, good evening. The matter before you this evening started in late November of 2017 when you directed staff to go out with a request for proposals for solid waste recycling and organic waste services. Five proposals were received in early 2018. In March of this year, you narrowed the five down to two. The conversation has continued in negotiations with those two through our consultant, Sloan Vasquez McAfee. We have Joe Sloan here with us this evening. He will give a presentation to you momentarily. There were top priorities of the council. I like to say they're quantitative and qualitative. Quantitative meaning the number side of it. And please, really at the staff level, to have a recommendation brought before you this evening that meets both of those criteria. The quantitative, one proposer, that was Recology, came out in a position superior to the others. And then qualitative, they are a provider who has been in this community for a long time, and we all know the quality service that they provide to us. So with that, I'd ask Joe Sloan to come forward to give you a recap of the negotiation process. Thank you.
Mayor Didball, City Councilman, thank you very much for the opportunity to address you this evening and would just like to say a couple of things in regards to the process that we've just about to complete, hopefully this evening. And that is, Steve mentioned the timeline, that we released the RFP in November, and here we are in May with a final recommendation to bring before you, or at least a recommendation to go and finalize a contract agreement. And I've been doing this work for a while, and I've never really gone one, through one that's gone through this quickly and this smoothly. And that's really a testimony to the council, the staff, but especially the participants, the proposers. The response to your RFP was extraordinary. You got five proposals from five very high-quality, highly qualified proposers. We were actually surprised to see that because, as you know, earlier in the process, I wasn't very optimistic about you really attracting competitive proposals. But you did indeed attract competitive proposals. A month ago, you sent us, or six weeks ago, you sent us to do final negotiations with two of those companies, Republic Services and Recology. And I have to say, excuse me, I have to say that also, in this regard, after having three decades of experience in these types of negotiations, this was a very highly professional endeavor. And both companies brought their A-game. They brought highly competent people, and they responded to every query that came from us and all the concerns of the council. So in that regard, it wasn't easy coming down to the final decision or the final analysis because, I have to say, in terms of capabilities, the companies are very, very comparable in terms of their capabilities. They each have excellent staff, they both have excellent financial resources, they both have excellent track records with their contract cities in almost every regard, even including the programs that they offered. They were very comparable. So really what it came down to in the final analysis, which it doesn't always come down to the, just the price, but in this case, because everything else was so photo finish, it really came down to the price. And so I've got a few slides here that I'll go through that are really, they're not the in-depth analysis, but they're a synopsis of what was accomplished in the bidding process. Is it? Okay. The, okay, good. Let me use that. Thanks. Okay, so the, we have the proposed, the originally proposed, this is when we solicited the proposals, these were the original documents that were turned in by the proposers. Republic's original bid for the requested service on the residential side was $30.90, and in negotiation, they dropped that 45 cents to $30.45. Recology's original proposal was $31.73, and during negotiation, they dropped it to 21, 29.25. We opted because there's a whole matrix of commercial services that are every size up to seven times a week. What we opted to do for the presentation is just show you, these are the services where by far the preponderance of your commercial customers are in these service levels. The two-yard bin once a week, three-yard bin once a week, four-yard bin once a week. Those are where, as I said, the preponderance of the customers are. So for example, the, I won't go through the proposed rates, we'll just go to negotiated. You can see they're very close on these rates where most of the subscribers are. Republic was at 202, Recology is at $200.63. Now, one differentiator is that Republic, on their recycling rates, now that's where the commercial customers who generate cardboard, junk mail, bottles and cans, the kind of stuff that people put out at the households, it's the same type program, it's just a commercial single-stream program. Republic offered to do that at 35% of their garbage rate, their garbage service rate, and Recology offered to do it at 50% of their quoted garbage rate. And for organics, Republic offered to do it at 80% of their garbage rate, Recology offered to do it at the same rate as their garbage rate. So there was a distinction there in terms of overall revenue generated through the commercial, commercial rates. But in the garbage rates, they're very comparable. The three-yard bin, the negotiated rate for Republic is 244, it's 243 practically for Recology. So as you can see, there's 293.99 and 291.93, that's for the four-yard once a week. Republic didn't offer a rate for the 32-gallon once a week. Oh, no, they did, I'm sorry. I was looking at the organics offering there. But there's a bit of a disparity there between the negotiated rate offered by Republic and the one offered by Recology. Then on the 96-gallon, it's a fairly comparable rate, 58.76 to 61.55. Where the real disparity came in, on the on-call roll-off box service, and you, roll-off boxes are the big boxes that you see at construction sites, they're 20 feet long and eight feet wide and six, seven, eight feet tall. Those boxes, the negotiated rate from Republic per pull on that was $333 for Recology, it was 300. But where a big disparity came into play was for the compacters that are greater than 10 cubic yards. Republic had a quite higher rate than Recology. Republic was at $1,400 per pull, and Recology's at 350. So this just gives kind of a, an overview of the, of the rates that, that were negotiated. So again, if you look just on the right column, it gives you, what we did was we, we looked at the, the rates that are in place now. Then you have currently before you, in the last year of your current contract, according to the rate adjustment schedule and the rate adjustment procedure protocol that's in that contract, the contractor was able to apply for a 15.6% rate increase in the last year of the contract. And that's in accordance with the terms that are set forth in the contract. And it's actually, one of the reasons that you opted to go through this process was to shed yourself of that cost-plus contract condition. So these are the current, these are the rates that are currently in effect. If that 15%, 15.6% rate increase went into effect in accordance with the terms and conditions of your current contract, these would be the rates that you'd see. So your 27, your current 27.29 would go to 32.26, and so you can see the comparison here. 190 would go to 225, 230 would go to 272, and so forth. That's if you apply the 15% rate adjustment. These are the rates that are proposed by the two companies that would go into effect in 2019. And so you can see that although they're a bit higher than the current rates, they're considerably lower than the rates that would go into effect if you implemented the 15.6% rate adjustment. So this is a synopsis of the total revenue requirement for the services that were proposed by both of the companies. And you can see that they're very close on the revenue requirement for the residential service, 6,001 versus 6,003. Recology's rate for residential service, or the revenue, I should say, for residential service is about little over 4% lower than that proposed by Republic. On the commercial side, and this is primarily generated by the difference in pricing between the recycling and, and organic service, Republic came in 12.8, almost 13% lower than Recology on the commercial rates, a difference of a little over $800,000. On the total debris box rate revenue, there were, this is where there became a large disparity, and it's really attributable to that, that large rate that I showed you on the last slide for the, the compactor rates. And it's, in this particular case, Recology's rate revenue requirement is about 62% lower than Republic's. For the temporary bins, those are the ones that people can order up, if they want to clean out their garage or, or whatever. The, the Republic rate was 11.4% lower than, than Recology's. But if you look at the total, the sum of all of those, the total first-year rate revenue requirement is here, is 14,396, and that includes the city fees that are included in the, the contract, and 14,867 for Republic for about a $471,000 difference. When you take those fees out, bottom line, this is net revenue to the contractor. Net revenue to the contractor, 12,800 to Recology, 13,200 to Republic, little over $400,000 difference, a 3.3% difference at the end of the day in what their proposed rates were. So what does that all mean? It means that this contract is set for a 10-year primary term. There are two five-year options that are at the city's sole discretion beyond the 10-year primary term. So the difference in revenue generated based upon the first year projection, and then what we did was we just added, for sake of comparison, we added 2.5% because you're going to get an annual CPI adjustment. For this calculation, we used 2.5% per year. Over the 10 years, there'd be about a $4.7 million difference between the revenues generated to Recology versus those revenues generated to Republic. And over the 20-year, you can see, there's a lot of money there over 20 years, 344 million to 355 million, or $11 million delta between the revenue requirements of the, the two final negotiated rates. So with that, I'll just conclude by again saying, appreciated your direction in this process, appreciated the participation of all the public, and particularly the competitors because I think they did a great job. One thing that's in your report, and I know that you're aware of it, is that Republic really brought their A-game, and they did everything that they could in the final analysis, including the fact of offering you a million dollar, offering the city, I should say, not you.
Thank you for clarifying.
Offering the city a million-dollar check should you decide to enter into a contract with them. That, they, they said, if we have the, the honor of receiving this contract, we'll write you a million-dollar check upfront. That is a, I'd say it's more than a gesture, it's, it's, it's a significant offer, but even considering that, it doesn't really come close to narrowing that gap, especially if you spread it out over the 10-year term. So with that, I just open it to your questions, or I'll just stand by for your questions.
Great, thank you. I'll bring it to council for any questions at this time? No? Okay. So we'll go ahead and open this to the public. I do have a card from Lisa.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Lisa Avila with Republic Services. And as you can tell from Joe's presentation, this RFP process worked, and I think all of you should be very proud of yourselves for pushing through and doing what was right for the community. With that said, I do have a question regarding the calculations, and it has to do with the green waste. And as we get further and further down the road with some of the laws that are coming into play with green waste and the responsibility of the city to have its commercial businesses recycle the green waste, I think that there's a little bit of an opportunity here. And with that, currently, in the information that we had from Recology, there was 4,885 yards of green waste current in the commercial system, and the calculations were based on 982 yards of green waste. We estimate that the yards of green waste would be 8,006 yards of green waste, and that's based on an increase from what is currently happening, as well as a calculation from CalRecycle stating that there's approximately 35% of green waste in the commercial waste stream. So that alone could equal or make up about a $396,000 difference. With the million dollars that Joe had mentioned that we were willing to put forward for the community upon signing the contract, that would put Republic Services at an advantage during this RFP process instead of a disadvantage with the final analysis. So regardless of what you decide tonight, we're very grateful that we've been participating in this process with you, and we look forward to any opportunity in the future to partner with Uba City. And the real winners in this whole process are the residents and the businesses because they're going to get better service, and they're going to get a better rate, and that's really what you guys set out to do, and I think you've accomplished that. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Anyone else who would like to speak?
I probably don't, probably don't need to announce myself, but good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. My name is Dave Vaughn, I live at 732 East Hillcrest Avenue here in Uba City. I also serve as Recology's Vice President and Senior Director of Business and Marketing Development. And so with that, I want to just come up tonight, I want to thank you guys for the opportunity to participate in the process. I do agree, it's made us a better organization. We're proud of the services we provide to everyone here, and we look forward to continuing to earn your business over the course of the next contract. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Anyone else? No? Okay, so we will bring it back to council for questions, comments of staff process.
I'll be happy to go first, through the mayor.
Yes.
I think there's a couple important pieces that Joe went over tonight. They've been gone over time and time again. But for answers to the public, that maybe this is the first time that they've been here or have heard any of this, I just want to cover a couple of items. Why did we, the city council, embark on this path of competitive bidding? I'm not going to try to answer for the other council members, but I'm going to answer for myself. We are currently in a contract negotiated more than seven years ago that was done behind closed doors, absent of public input. While the company, Recology, and predecessor iterations of the business provided exceptional service and community support, the negotiations for the new contract, the one we're currently in, languished until the 11th hour. Recology management approached the council, five and a half months passed the contract due date to remind the council that the contract termination date was upon us in a short 20 days, and that they were no longer obligated to collect waste in the city. The blame for the protracted negotiations seemed to be in both directions. This wasn't worth repeating in the future. The contract in the final version wasn't something that I could support. The primary reason was the rate stabilization fee designed to protect both parties from public scrutiny regarding rate increases. The final objection was the cost-plus provision, ensuring the provider an 11% profit on defined operating expenses. What influenced me as a member to engage in this process was to be open and honest with the rate pair through open meetings where details could be discussed and public comment heard. The options were one, enter directly into negotiations behind closed doors where the council would be protected from the public. Or the second one, to conduct the entire process open to the public, certain of public backlash. And in my case, the answer was simple. The market and fair rate needed to be tested by all qualified bidders with a fair opportunity to enter the proposal process, thereby stimulating competition in a manner conducive to sound fiscal practices, to eliminate the possibility of favoritism, fraud, or corruption in awarding a contract worth over $300,030 million. This has been a successful process as it was designed. It engaged competition the likes of Recology, Recology Uba Sutter, Atlas, Waste Management, Republic Services, and Waste Connections. The unfortunate fact of the process is not everyone qualified at a high level to warrant going further in the process. Even more unfortunate are the attacks and misleading information related to a local business indirectly connected to the process by their desire to expand their business model. I know by the context of comments and emails sent to my attention, those responding have been provided false information, and let me set this record straight. All efforts by Recycle Industries are that of a private business and not of the city of Uba City. The RFP process, designed at the direction of the council, was led by Sloan Vasquez McAfee, which leveled the playing field in an apples-to-apples comparison, ensuring retention and ensuring retention of Recology employees. This process identified two strong proposals. The process was not looking for the lowest bidder. Had that been the case, neither of the finalists would have made it to negotiations. There was a lower bidder. I want to thank Recology Uba Sutter and Republic Services for their well-crafted and strong proposals and desire to negotiate in a fair and competitive manner. This agreement isn't complete, but the base work relieves the rate payers of liability for closure and post-closure costs related to the landfill in Marysville, the relocation of Feather River Organics, and capping Consumer Price Index adjustments. As a result of the recent negotiations, I can and will support continued negotiations directly and exclusively with Recology Uba Sutter to provide waste collection services for a term of 10 years with two five-year extensions, thereby stabilizing the financial obligation of the city rate pairs.
Thank you. Stan? Or Manny first? Go for it.
All right. I'd also like to thank Republic and Recology for this long process. And I also would like to say, John did such an excellent job, he took the wind out of my sails here, I'll tell you. I want to also thank the Recology family because it's been some tough times the last few months, six months, almost a year, that, you know, employees going to work hoping that they have a job to come to when this was all done and over with. And I'm glad that the process is done, it was done very calmly. Well, there was a little bit turmoil, but here towards the end, it was done very calmly. And I thank you very much for, both companies for doing this, and we'll have, Recology and we're working with the city, we'll mend some bridges and get, get back to having a good workplace, working together for years to come. Thank you.
Through the mayor. Thank you. This is my third contract process, full process, and came in as a county supervisor when it had just been, all gone through, and I didn't know what, what the contract was. So actually, this is my fourth time through this process. I just wanted to let you know a little bit about where my concerns came from, the initial concern. I serve on the League of California Cities Environmental Quality Policy Committee. That's a statewide cities dealing with all kinds, anything environmental. And one of the primary issues we have had the last two years and will for quite a while, it was solid and is solid waste, and the legislation implementation that's going on, which you, the citizens, and myself are going to have to recycle our food waste, but not meats and oils. I mean, they're, they've gone crazy on some of this stuff, but we're going to have to do it. And based upon what I have learned on that committee the last two years, and studying about the different legislation that are being implemented, I looked at our contract and looked, looked at the legislation that's coming, and I said, this contract, while, you know, I don't like cost plus, it's broken on another level, the fact that it was not going to fulfill or be able to be modeled in a way that could fulfill the requirements that are coming. So the claim that it was broken was absolutely wrong. The contract was broken for the future. We needed to make a wholesale change on many different levels and categories. So we had to do something. I definitely, we were very clear from the very beginning, the staff and the council as what we wanted to achieve, very clear. While sometimes it gets lost in the emotion and the communication, and, you know, sometimes we speak in a more technical language than what most people can understand, we have to be very careful in how we communicate and the words we use. John, you were too concise, you really took a lot of the wind, as Manny said. But we wanted to discontinue the cost-plus contract model, stabilize or standardize the rate increase formula, retain highest-quality, safe services as possible. This included retaining the employees, achieve the best value, which was not the number-one issue, change residential, the philosophical approach to recycling, which is to remove the excuses for not putting waste, excuse me, this wind has still got me messed up in my chest, putting waste in the correct bin, which I know Jackie is always talking about. Well, this removes their, their excuse for not putting it in because we're going to have large bins, and so if they don't have it in there, we will have the ability to go and say, you have no excuses, please help us reduce our contamination from 25 or 30%, hopefully down to eh, 5, 10%, hopefully 5. And that makes it easier for the waste collector and processor to process it. It becomes less costly. It becomes less costly for them to process because you have certain contaminants in there and they have to throw it into the landfill. So, I mean, it makes the landfill tonnage go up. So, all these things were part of our goals is to actually try to get closer to the waste zero as is talked about all the time. This is the way we saw to do it. Okay, the claim to sharpen the pencils didn't work. As you can see, the pencils are very sharp and thank you for coming and coming to the table, Recology, and actually understanding what we were trying to do and make it happen. It's an honor to have people that will do that in our community. So, while the cost was not an endgame deal breaker, this contract will save millions of dollars to the rate payers when compared to the old contract proposed. As it was said, the 2018-19 increase of more than 15% will save, now that alone itself will save over a million dollars a year to the contract and if we'd had it continue on before. It'll drop at a million dollars. The 18-19 will be at this, at a certain level and then the next year it'll drop a million, which means your rates go down. As an example, who in here actually would have a 96, has a family that has a lot of waste and stuff, does a 96-gallon bin? That's $64. It'll go down to $29. $435 a year savings because it's not based on the volume, it's based upon a default of 96. You're not going to produce more garbage. You're going to produce the same amount, we just will have bigger bins for everything else. So, that philosophy, we have changed and hopefully we can, it'll work and I can't see why it would not. So, the sharpening the pencil worked extremely well. Not transparent. This claim was misleading to the public since the ones saying it know that almost all draft data and information from the city and the proposers is confidential. Most of it is proprietary. We couldn't reveal anything. So, for them actually to put pressure on us, mislead the public that we're not being transparent, we're not letting people know, for me, was at best ethically bankrupt. It was misleading the public and created a division in our public and our community was absolutely not necessary. So, that division, I hope we'll come back and see that we did our legal duty the way we are required by law to do it. I'm very happy with the end results that have happened. We have more services, new machinery, everything's supposed to be brand-new unless we negotiate some other provisions in the next stage of the negotiations, but more services at a less cost and new machines and new equipment. So, I think this will be something, if it continues, it will go the 20 years. I would expect, since the pencils were so sharp, I would expect at least 20 years on this contract, to my expectations. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmembers.
To the mayor. What a wild ride we've gone through as a community the last year or so and I tell you, with a comment from Joe over here saying that our proposers came together very professionally, I am really proud of that and to hear that and people, because anyone who pays attention to Facebook, and I don't, I try to not to, but I tell you, it's all over the map, some of the things that have been said out there and I think me personally, almost a thousand emails, I think we, almost a thousand emails. So, you know, that alone tells you it's a very contentious, very emotional issue. The fact that we are overflowing in this room today, very emotional issue. And we come together as a community, we come together with the benefit of the experience of Joe Sloan and company, Vasquez-McAfee. They're professionals and they bring to the table, very, very fair. Everybody gave it their best shot and we came to a conclusion, I think it's pretty clear now. It's also not a secret that, based on, again, I'll speak for myself, would love to see that streamlined it a few months earlier, a few tens of thousands of dollars earlier and a lot of emotion and stress on some employees from Recology. However, the results are here. We came together and we made a decision as a council, we stand by that and I think the process did work. I think it's come through and I'm looking forward to moving on in the future here with our Recology. That's where I want to vote. So, again, I'm proud to be sitting here representing you. I'm proud to take the time to do the homework and do the research and talk with folks about this issue. I've learned more about solid waste management I ever thought I would ever in my entire life, but it's a good thing, you know? But I don't want to belabor the point, but thank you all for your participation, however slight, and we are moving forward together.
Thank you. All right. And just a few comments from myself. I believe in the bidding process, I believe in competitive bidding. It was something that I felt very strong about, to come in and look at a contract that's 40 years old, that has not gone through a competitive bidding process over all of these years. I felt very, very strong about the need to do this. I believe in the process. It's important. That competitive bidding is what made everybody sharpen their pencils. We came to these type of negotiations, this type of decision and, I mean, the services of, we wanted the highest quality of service. We got it. We, you know, we look at the rates, we decrease the rates, we've looked at every entity, we took a deeper dive into this contract and what we wanted for the citizens, for the people in this community, is what we were striving for and that's where we are right now. I know the emotions were high. We got plenty of emails, plenty of Facebook posts. I wasn't going to respond to it. I know the emotions are high, but this is just part of business. This is part of making the best decision with all the information in front of you. And I think through this competitive bidding, I strongly believe we got the information. Everybody came forward, everybody was a professional and I appreciate that. Thank you so much to all of the competitors that put their best foot forward and did what they needed to do. You are passionate about this community, both of the competitors, both of the proposers, you can tell, but you know what, we came down and we penciled it down and here we are. So, thank you for your passion, thank you for wanting to take care of this community because together we will continue to do that. We're professionals, we're adults and we went through a very, very emotional process and we want to do the best for the community. That was what I stood here for from day one and I will continue to do that. And that's how I feel. I feel we're right at where we need to be. So, with that being said, I would like to see negotiations continue at this point with Recology from the information that's been forwarded here.
To the mayor.
So, if we want to discuss any further or have a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we enter into final negotiations for solid waste, recycling, and organic material collection services agreement with Recology Yuba Sutter.
I'll second.
And with that, I did forget something. There was an accusation that we spent more money than we should have. And I can tell you that I would rather spend 10,000 to 20,000 more dollars and save a million dollars a year. That's a pretty good investment, return on investment. And I believe that that's what we did here, digging deeper as was mentioned by the mayor and finding all the details. And I can tell you, with what we got, there is absolutely no way we could have come out with a contract like this if we'd have gone through negotiations. It's so varied, so different of a contract. If you go out and compare them, you'll look at it and go, wow, it's two different worlds. There's no way we could have done it through negotiations and I think it was a fantastic investment, just a few thousand dollars more to make that savings for you and me on my rates.
Thank you. So, we have a motion and a second. Won't we do roll call vote, please? Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Cardoza?
Absolutely, yes.
Councilmember Buckland?
Yes.
Councilmember Cleveland?
Yes.
Mayor Diddball?
Yes. All right. So, that being said, a motion has been approved to move forward with Recology at this point.
It's going to, we'll give it a few minutes. It's going to clear out the chamber.
Yeah, we got to get after it. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Did you get to the top of it? It's beautiful inside.
Hey now, hey now.
So, we will move on to our next agenda.